There we go. Good morning and welcome, citizens of Douglas County. Welcome to our September 8th, 2025 Work Session of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and we will call this meeting to order. It is now 10:09 a.m., Madam Clerk, for the record. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner District Henry Mitchell is absent today. Commissioner District Two, Whitney Kenner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner District Three, Martin Raxton.
Present.
Commissioner District Four, Vice Chair Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman, Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones.
Present. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, did we have anyone sign up for public comment this morning?
Yes, ma'am. We have two individuals, but before I call you up, I'll remind you, you'll have three minutes to address the board. Once your three minutes are up, I'll ask you to wrap up your comments, and when you reach the podium, please restate your name and address for the record. Our first individual is Sheila Massey.
Yes, my name is Sheila Massey, and I live at 5038 Horton Place, Douglasville, Georgia. How's everyone doing this morning?
Doing well, Ms. Massey.
Well, I'm a little bit upset. We have overbuilt our county with subdivisions and people, so much so that it has affected our school system, it has affected our roads, and most important, it has affected our hospital. Last week, a dear friend of mine had a stroke, went into the hospital. She laid on a stretcher for 27 hours in the hall with people passing. That's not the hospital's fault. It's the fact that we have overbuilt our county before the infrastructure could be rebuilt. We've got the cart before the horse, and it's sad because people are suffering in the hospital. People die in the hospital, in the emergency room, before they can even get them to the floor in a room because of the infrastructure. And something needs to be done. I don't know at this point what, but there needs to be two wings on that hospital, and it's not the hospital's fault, so it's the county's fault. The county should build two more wings on that hospital to supplement the structure and overbuild of the county. And when I saw her on that stretcher for 27 hours in the hall with people passing by with a stroke, this is sad, and something needs to be done. And like I said, since it's the county's fault, there needs to be at least one wing added to that hospital, but really two would suffice. And then they would need to hire staffing to help. But I'm just telling you, it's sad that we have overbuilt before thinking about how it's going to affect the rest of the county. I mean, the roads are potholes everywhere. Can't even fix the potholes, but yet we're bringing people in to wear them down. Something needs to be done, and allowing all these. There's a big, huge subdivision going in right there on Stewart Mill Road. More people coming in from all over the nation into our county, and it's overloaded the county, and it's affecting every infrastructure of this county, and something needs to be done. My suggestion is build some wings on that hospital because that's life and death situations, not counting our children being overcrowded with the teachers trying to teach our children. What kind of education are they getting whenever you've got 40 kids in one classroom with one teacher? Something should have been thought about before we started building all these subdivisions, bringing these people in. So. So that's just what I got to say. I'm very upset because after going and experiencing that situation at the hospital, I am very upset.
Thank you so much, Ms. Massey, for coming in. Your matter would be, this matter will be certainly taken under advisement. Thank you again. Ms. Massey, could you leave your telephone number with the county clerk or either write it down and bring it? You have it back. I'll get it then. I'll give you a call.
Thank you, precious.
All right. Thank you. Have a great day. Madam Clerk, who's next?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Wayne Bennett.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am back yet again to reiterate my recent proposal that Douglas County create a Citizens Budget Oversight Committee. I understand that Commissioner Raxton has proposed an audit committee, which I fully support that, but audits are usually backward-facing, not current and forward-facing. Now, I did have a moment to speak with Commissioner Raxton prior to this meeting, and he had a twist to his proposal that I was not aware of, but I still feel strongly that if we have citizen involvement in the departmental budgets, and I'm talking about in the weeds, that will, it will foster openness, transparency, and trust in our government that is lacking currently. And with respect to budgeting too, and I had an opportunity recently to speak with my Commissioner Kenner Jones, which we had a very nice meeting, in my opinion, but this is pervasive throughout budgeting culture in the public and private sector. Departments are afraid that if they don't spend all their money, then they're not going to get it the next year. And I think Douglas County needs to figure out a way to foster a new way of thinking with respect to budgeting and not have that fear, and maybe be a trailblazer and a leader in that respect, that don't be afraid. If you don't need something that you've budgeted for, don't spend the money, and don't be afraid you're not going to get it when you need it. And like I said, this is pervasive throughout. I've had budgeting experience. I retired from a quasi-government organization, and I know that it is what it is. People are just afraid if they don't spend their money that they've been budgeted or given, you might say, that they won't get it the next time. So I'm just asking for some thought along the lines of trying to change that culture. Another thing, when you have departments that are running under budget, celebrate those departments. Recognize them, acknowledge them, and I guess maybe likewise admonish the ones that are running way over budget because there's a problem. There's obviously a problem there if they are running over budget. So, and that is where we need citizen oversight. And like I said, I'm talking about from the weeds up, and I'm not talking about meeting just prior to budget time or the budget season. I'm talking about meeting January through December, and especially until the point where people that are on this committee are immersed and become familiar and all, I think this is probably a committee that needs to meet monthly, and then perhaps down the road, perhaps quarterly. But we, the citizens of this county, need more voice in their, in how their county government is operating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Certainly, we'll take this matter under advisement and appreciate your comments this morning. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right. Board of Commissioners, this morning, we have two presentations. Our first presentation is from Good Samaritan by Mr. Michael Sizemore. Are you here? Oh, there you are. I'm looking at you. We have a presentation. You can come on up and, Board of Commissioners, we have three folks, okay? Four. Well, come on up and introduce yourselves. I know Mr. Sizemore is going to lead this off. This is regarding our food bank. Had an opportunity to visit our food bank, one here in Douglas County, as certainly we are grappling with what's going on in our economic volatility, as we deal with economic volatility, and certainly had an opportunity to tour and just meet and speak. And there were some questions regarding, you know, our participation in just sourcing and helping with the project, and I said, come speak to the Board of Commissioners. So, Ms. Darling Sheridan, you have, but if you all could just introduce yourselves one by one initially to the Board of Commissioners, because I only had Mr. Sizemore on here, so I don't want them to be derailed this morning, so.
Well, good morning. My name is Darling Sheridan.
Okay.
I'm Reverend Dr. Lasagna Richardson with Love Christian Center.
Okay.
Michael Sizemore, Good Samaritan Center.
Frank Smith, The Pantry.
Okay. All right. Presentation, you all have 15 minutes.
Okay. Greetings, Madam Chair and distinguished commissioners. My name is Darling Sheridan. I'm with the Midway Community Pantry, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak with you today about Feed Douglas Cooperative. Feed Douglas Cooperative, FDC, is a coalition of like-minded, purpose-driven food pantries across Douglas County. Together, we are committed to tackling food insecurity head-on. Our shared vision is to ensure access to food to all those who need it in the community. So driven by this, we launched Feed Douglas Cooperative in November 2024 to address the ongoing challenges of food sourcing, distribution, and the need for a more diverse and responsive food supply. Our mission is this: working to assure our neighbors seeking assistance get the food necessary to thrive. Currently, nine charitable food organizations, which are Crossroads Church, Douglasville First United Methodist Church, Dreams Come True International, Good Samaritan Center of Douglas County, The Pantry, Love Christian Center, Midway Community Pantry, Vision 21 Concepts, and your new best friend are part of the cooperative. As shown on this map, these pantries marked in yellow are located in considered low-income areas across all four districts of Douglas County. Our intention is to continue growing and recruiting additional charitable food organizations to strengthen our impact. In addition to our food providers, the Feed Douglas Cooperative also includes organizations and individuals who may not directly distribute food, but play a vital part in addressing food insecurity, such as Cobb Douglas Public Health, American Heart Association, Georgia Health Policy, Georgia State Physical Activity, and Nutrition Programs.
And this morning, I'm here to give you a few numbers about the cooperative. Once again, I'm Reverend Dr. Lasagna Richardson with Love Christian Center. Our total impact for Feed Douglas Cooperative was 3.8 million pounds of food that were distributed in Douglas County last year. 2.6 million pounds of that food was given directly to, thank you, given to Douglas County residents. Seventy percent of the people served are Douglas County residents. We had 59 distributions, we have 59 distributions per month, ranging in days, Monday through Saturdays, during all types of day, during all times of day, to try to reach as many people in the community as possible. In that distribution, we have over 1,150 volunteers that volunteer their time and over 4,800 volunteer hours. Our volunteers are coming from people who actually receive food. They're, we're registered with Hands-on Atlanta, so people come in, they see us on there. And then also, we are registered with the county services, so people doing their community service can come and volunteer their time. The USDA defines food insecurity as "the limited or uncertain availability of nutritionally adequate and safe foods, or limited uncertain ability to acquire acceptable foods in socially acceptable ways." So we want to just make sure that we can get people. We try to put together full meals for the families when they come. So in 2023, the latest numbers that we could get, 18,050 people were dealing with food insecurity, and of that number, 7,430, which equates to one in five, were children dealing with food insecurity. And then finally, 45% of our children are receiving free and reduced lunch. So if you can imagine during the summer, when school is not in session, those children sometimes don't eat. So that's what our food co-op is trying to combat.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Sizemore.
I've done this for about eight years, and I'm still shocked to hear that so many children experience food insecurity. Twenty percent. It's a lot. The food pantries in Douglas County, our primary source of food is the Atlanta Community Food Bank. Not surprising. In just about every area, there's a centralized food bank. They have a network that reaches, feeds people in the area. ACFB receives their food through donations from corporations or individuals, partnerships with Feeding America. This partnership with Feeding America allows many of the food pantries to pick up donations from grocery stores directly. So we have vehicles that go around to Kroger, Public, Sam's, Walmart, Target. So we have vehicles that go around to Kroger, Public, Sam's, Walmart, Target, pick up the food that's nearing the sell-by date. And that's a program through the food bank and Feeding America. Atlanta Community Food Bank also receives their funding through state and federal sources, which comes to some of the challenges ACFB began facing this year. Any nonprofit is always having a hard time collecting enough money through donations, but at the, well, initially, the biggest challenge for the food bank, the network grew from about 350 food pantries across the metropolitan area to almost 700 today in about three years. So almost doubled the number of food pantries serving the people in the community. During that period of growth, the overall foot traffic to any food pantry in the ACFB network increased by 60%. That's all going on after the pandemic, over the course of two, three, almost four years, almost double the number of food pantries, the number of people seeking out of food pantry increased by 60%. And then at the beginning of spring this year, the food bank was hit with $15 million in budget cuts as well as other cuts to USDA programs, which were a significant source of food that came to the food bank that then filtered down to the food pantries. The budget cuts then came to all the food pantries and us in Douglas County, the Feed Douglas Cooperative, beginning on July 1st. The cost of food, it's a share fee that we pay to the food bank for shelf-stable food, that increased. And so that becomes the Feed Douglas Cooperative food sourcing challenges. Number one, of course, the increase in the price that we pay to the food bank for food. Initially, we started the cooperative as a way to supplement the types of food products that we were able to source through ACFB. We can get a lot of food from there, but some items like toiletries, cleaning supplies, it's not food, so the food bank doesn't have it. Then when the budget cuts hit the food bank, we kind of refocused, pivoted, you know, different catchphrases. Instead of trying to provide a bigger grocery store of items to people coming to the pantry, we started focusing on how are we going to pay for what we're already doing? The share fees increased, specifically delivery costs increased from three to six times what they used to be. In fairness, ACFB had not raised their prices in 10 years. So probably a little bit overdue, maybe not, just as they were able to increase their corporate donations, individual donations, it was passed to the food pantries. But they lost $15 million in funding, so we lost it too. Transportation costs increased three to six times percent, three to six times, not percent. The cost of food increased by about four times. And a way to look at that, three years ago, we could spend around eight cents for a 16-ounce jar of peanut butter, which is cheap. That's why we're able to give away almost four million pounds of food on a tiny little budget. That cost today is about 35 cents. So that's still really cheap and it underwrites the effectiveness of Atlanta Community Food Bank. But it was eight cents, now it's 35 cents. So we have to struggle to come up with that money. Many of the products that we were able to source through the food bank for free a couple years ago now have a share fee. And it can be as little as 20 or 30 dollars for a pallet of food to 150 dollars. And it's inexpensive, but the increase to our pantries is significant. You know, it's like, we budget for the year and in the middle of the year, our fiscal year is January, December, we, we're finding it. We do hope to be able to continue working to provide a more diverse variety of food. Instead of just having certain items, we want to be able to provide people with what they need to make a meal. Like we can have potatoes, but maybe there's no butter. Okay, sorry, I ramble. I told him to poke me in the back. So yet, we still want to be able to provide complete meals to any of the families that visit us. That's a challenge that as we get to our funding needs and we'll work on that too. And we want to provide fresh produce as much as possible. It should be healthier. Most of the people visiting, at least the Good Samaritan, that's something they ask for rather than canned food. And the fourth challenge focuses, and we're highlighting just the Good Samaritan Center, the ongoing increase in food insecurity that we're seeing since 2021. In that year, the Good Samaritan Center served a little more than 65,000 individuals. And by the end of last year, that had more increased to 140,000. So just the foot traffic at the Good Samaritan Center, which we're the biggest pantry, we give away about 45% of the food in Douglas County. But our foot traffic increased by 200,000%. Some of our greater increase is we had the capacity to expand and serve more people, whereas some of the other pantries, which may be smaller, they couldn't expand to accommodate the increase in need in foot traffic. So spotlighting Good Samaritan, it's up by 200%. We'll continue to do it as we can. It's hard to, it's hard to say that we won't be able to serve more people, but the increase is expected to continue. It's leveled off a little bit this year, but future budget cuts are anticipated to snap and other USDA programs. We may experience another dramatic spike in foot traffic as more families seek food assistance.
Yes.
So that's my presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sizemore. All right.
Thank you, Michael. I'm Frank Smith with The Pantry and just a little bit of my story. I've been here in Douglas County since 2001 and my wife and I have been feeding the food insecure for the last 25 years. So we know a little bit about what we're talking about, what we're facing. And Michael and I joined together several years ago, working together in a partnership, just to prove to other partners in the community that one food pantry and another food pantry could work together in cooperation without fighting with each other. And we've proven that over an eight-year period. And so last year, we decided we're going to invite other partners in and show them how together we can be better, we can be bigger, we can be stronger, and we can do more for our community. We have three goals that we're working on. Joint cross-sector partner development by pursuing grant and foundational funding, partnerships with businesses and nonprofits, obtain a shared storage location, ideally cold storage. Let me tell you a story. Couple weeks ago, we were offered chickens from a local chicken manufacturer and we were not able to take it because my cold storage was already cold, was already full and Michael's, unfortunately, his freezer went down and he couldn't take anything because his freezer was no longer frozen. So we had to turn that away. We never like to turn away food. So we need to identify a cold storage location that can be shared amongst all the pantries. Michael and I, we can do a lot, but we can do a lot more together if the county would work with us identifying a building that potentially has large cold storage units that we could rehab, refurbish, and repurpose for the purpose of providing cold storage, frozen storage for our nine food pantries in Feed Douglas Cooperative. Also, we want to share excess food between members. Just two weeks ago, we were offered 54 pallets of food that we had three hours to determine if we would take it or not. It was just miles away on a semi. We called our cooperative members and we all said yes immediately, whereas if Michael and I had to do that, we would have had to turn it away and it would have ended up in a landfill. Because we could say yes, we were able to distribute those 54 pallets to all of our cooperative members and it was distributed within that week. And so a lot of people were fed with those 54 pallets. And just this last Thursday, because of a partnership with Convoy of Hope, they offered us 24 pallets of food from their new Carterville facility and they brought down 49 pallets of food. We were able to distribute that all in a four-hour timeframe to our local partners and that's all being distributed last week and this week to people that are hungry in all of your districts. So here's the thing, it takes a village, people, businesses, corporations, students, nonprofits, government, to feed food insecure people. While Feed Douglas Cooperative was discussing solutions to our problems, we immediately saw one creme de la creme rise to the top. And you're sitting here in this room right now. You're the people that we're coming to as strong partners and it's not like you haven't worked with us in the past. You've worked with us before by putting together a food distribution at the Lithia Springs Senior Center. You initiated the Home Plate Project with Woody Fight Senior Center. You partnered with Midway Community Pantry for their pantry expansion. And three years ago, you helped us buy, help us, when I say us, The Pantry, buy a refrigerated truck that in the last three years distributed, collected more than 3 million pounds of food that would otherwise have gone to a landfill if it hadn't been for your donation to help us get a refrigerated truck. So let me emphasize, what are we looking for? $200,000, whoa, that sounds like a lot of money. It's .004, .00348% of the annual budget for the county. I don't think that's a lot. I could take .00438% out of my pocket right now and it'd be less than a dollar. That 200,000 represents 460,000 more pounds of food that we can distribute to our community, which will help people have margin in their lives, have more healthy food in their life, and be more successful in their life because we're helping them have margin, have some resources, so they're not spending all their money at a grocery store. They can spend more on their utility bill, on their rent, on fuel to get back and forth to work. So your partnering with us is helping us to help your constituents. So without funding like this, we may likely have to scale back. None of us here, sitting here today, want to do that. We want to be able to scale equal and up. Feed Douglas Cooperative is working together to develop partnerships and funding sources to meet the expected increased demand. Douglas County government could also help identify and connect the cooperative to potential partners like Kihi, Gordon Food Services, other large US Foods that could help us identify cold storage in their buildings or other, maybe partner with us by helping us build a facility that has large freezer, cooler spaces. We are here to serve your constituents as together we give them a hand up, not just a handout. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith, and thank you so much, Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Sizemore and Dr. Richardson, thank you all so much. Certainly I had an opportunity to spend time with you and certainly toured Good Samaritan and my eyes were open quickly, realizing that we are in a time where things are being cut back, that I noticed some of the shelves were sparse and I noticed the amount of people that were there waiting on food, so it touched my heart. And that's why I wanted to bring it to the Board of Commissioners to let them hear your concerns. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions this morning? Commissioner Raxton, you have the floor.
Okay, all right, good morning.
Good morning.
So thank you for being here and thank you for what you do to support our community and our residents. It is definitely greatly appreciated and so many that will go without because of you they're not. So I just want to thank you for what you're providing and the cooperative that's occurring because I think there is definitely something with synergies in working collaboratively. So I want to talk a little bit more, I heard two asks, one was to identify a building with a large storage unit. Is that one of the asks is for us to assist or I just want to make sure I understand what?
Obviously you have a lot more contacts than we have. I have a lot, but not nearly as many as you have. You know of people, our businesses, corporations, that are looking to move into a community that want, they want to help with a feeding program perhaps. And you could potentially refer them to Feed Douglas Cooperative. And we could help walk them through what our processes are, what we're looking for. And you don't have to necessarily make an ask, we can make the ask. I am not afraid to ask for money.
All right.
So there's two asks.
Okay, so in second, of course, we'll say, um, 200,000. And you mentioned 460,000 pounds of additional food that could be brought into the community.
That's correct.
So without, would you be able to support that without the large storage facility?
Yes.
So you would, based on your current?
Because the 200,000 will be all shelf-stable food, which can be distributed through all of our cooperative members. And all of us together have the ability to be able to store that kind of food.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so I would just ask, and I know Darling Sheridan, you and I are in the program together with Leadership Douglas, and I know now we're talking about working with nonprofit organizations, so feel free to check with me, get with me. I would love just to share that as we're, my current class is looking at partnerships with nonprofit organizations here in Douglas County, so I just wanted to offer that up as well.
Leadership Douglas 2005, best class ever.
How about that? Okay, all right, we'll see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Commissioner Kenner Jones, you have the floor.
Well, first, thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing this before us. It struck a nerve with me when you made the comment that you're surprised that there's still 20% of kids who are food insecure. That's an issue that I see every day in court and I want to make sure that the public realizes when parents can't feed their kids, they end up in foster care. That it's a form of neglect that people have zero control over. If they had the money to feed their children, they absolutely would. Our school systems, I will give it to them, they're trying to do their level best to make sure that they can feed each of the students that comes before them, but just the number of students who can't wake up and go to school anymore because they've lost the COVID assistance that was providing free lunch to all of our students in Douglas County and that program ended last year, so now it's back to a fee service. And I think people don't realize that the fee for food for lunch is not standardized across the board, so you may be at one school system and lunch is $2 and another school system and it's $3.75. That dollar and 75 cents, it's make or break if you're trying to decide if you're going to purchase diabetes medication, heart medication, put gas in your car, figure out how to get to and from wherever, and then if you don't even have a car, how do you get to the pantry to get the food in the first place? So then you're struggling to find a bus line to get where you need to go, it's too much. So yes, you have my support with whatever the Board of Commissioners decides to come up with to do for that because it just makes sense to take care of the people who we are here to support. The other thing that I want to applaud all of you for mentioning is that you want to give people actual meals. There is nothing more degrading than to go through a food pantry and get a box of hodgepodge items that do not match and then figure out how to make a summer meal with some of this and some of that to get your family fed. So I truly applaud and appreciate you for making this a dignified effort so that people actually get to feel like they have gone shopping and provided for their families so that they can give them what they need and deserve. So, well done, I appreciate it. Madam Chair, you're back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Kenner Jones. Vice Chair, you have the floor. Vice Chair Alcaraz.
I had the privilege of going to spend some time with the Richardson's at their church and to see the amount of people who lined up. We had actually a fantastic meeting, we cut up a bit. But to see what their church has done in those facilities that they are and their mindset to help our community, I loved it when they showed me what their intentions were. Mr. Richardson thought he was going to be able to get all that food in a closet, but then next thing you know, the amount of food that came, they modified and they adjusted to their church, but it was their given heart that I actually got to see that day. And by the time it got time to serve those people, the line was stretched so far, I could not, they had to assist me to get out of the parking lot. But the need is there, it was backed up all the way to Highway Five. What you do is fantastic. I used to serve on the Board of DFACS and to see the amount of people who applied for food assistance and it's hard to get approved this day and age for that. But during that time while they're waiting to see if they're approved or not, your ministry of what you're doing now is there and it's available. But I'm glad that you brought this forward because a lot of people don't know about this. People new to our community are not aware of the programs that you're in, the assistance that you're offering. So I appreciate you coming forward with all of this and I would back my fellow commissioners on this.
Okay. All right, did you yield?
I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Food security is real. Board of Commissioners, and you've made it very clear to me today with your responses and you understand. Certainly it was a privilege and a pleasure to meet Good Samaritan and also our partners that were all there. Dr. Richardson wasn't there, but of course she knows, I see her in the community and she talks to me and explains to me what's going on and I wanted to make sure that the board was aware. My daughter's a teacher in the classroom and she speak about if they're not fed well, how they respond in the classroom and if you're hungry, you can't think. So with that being said, we appreciate you coming out today and you'll hear further from us. Is that okay? All right, thank you. We appreciate your presentation. I will allow you to exit the room and then we'll start with our next, okay? All right. Hey Pastor Richardson, I didn't see you. How you doing? You were in the corner. How you doing? All right, we're going to move on to our next presentation, which is Greystone Power. We have Nadia Fawcett, who is the Vice President of, that's correct, right, Vice President, right?
Yes, Chief Administrative Officer.
Okay, right, okay, the Chief Administrative Officer of Greystone Power. And she's going to give us a presentation on grid reliability because that is questions we've had around data centers and things of that sort regarding the grid and asked that she come in and certainly her, her boss, Mr. Gary Miller, wanted to make sure that the board was aware of what that grid looks like. So you have the floor this morning.
Well, good morning, good morning. Let me make sure I get the presentation up for you.
Okay.
There we go. So, good morning, I did want to take a quick minute, and I'm going to put my timer on, I think you said fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes. But I wanted to take a quick minute, Commissioners, to introduce you to our team. So we have Toni Hannah, she is our Vice President of Member Relations and External Affairs. Toni's new to our team, so you'll see her certainly in the community. And of course Blake Doss, you know Blake very well, he's our Director of State Government Affairs. And then also with our Georgia Transmission Team, a partner with us is Joey Heath. He leads in the transmission work to serve the data centers and so he's here with me as well. So, as you mentioned, my name is Nadia Fawcett, I am the Chief Administrative Officer at Greystone. Prior to that, I was Vice President of Engineering and then prior to that, I spent about eighteen years with Georgia Power. So have been in this power space for over twenty-five years and I will say that it is moving faster than it ever has moved with the onset of data centers. And so at Greystone, we want to make sure that we can serve those that come into our community, but we do it responsibly and we always put our members at the forefront of what we do. So I'll talk a little bit about Greystone first and then share a little bit about our process for working with data centers as well as what is the impact to the grid for data centers. And then lastly, what are some key takeaways, some milestones, or even some obstacles that we walk through as we have served these. So, so who are we? We serve about a hundred and thirty-five members, about forty-two, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, excuse me, members, about a forty-two thousand of those are in Douglas County. On the scale of size, we are about the fourth largest electric cooperative in Georgia. About seven thousand, over seven thousand miles of line, that's the overhead lines as well as underground lines. About fifty percent, over fifty percent of our system is underground. And we have about three hundred, we've grown to about three hundred employees and about three billion kilowatt hour soul. And we started a, an internet, we are an internet service provider, we started a internet broadband fiber network because we saw the need in communities like Douglas and others that we serve. And so we started that business probably almost two years ago, year and a half ago and we are about two thousand subscribers to that business as well. So I put this on the slide because you see this, of course, as our logo, but it is much more to us. Making life better is our vision, it's our mission statement and so really it is, it is how we operate. We are a not-for-profit, we are a nonprofit. So anything that we take in to, as far as revenue, we use that revenue to operate the business and then we give that back to our members. We do, we are not owned by shareholders, we're owned by the members that we serve, the people, the businesses that we serve, those are our owners. And we have a nine-member Board of Directors, that's elected by the membership and those are the folks that hold us accountable, that give us direction and vision and approve our strategy to move forward. And I say that because as we move into the space of growing need for data centers coming into the communities that we serve, we certainly turn to that, those members, that Board of Directors, to approve, guide us on when we should say yes and then when we need to, you know, say, hey, we need to wait for this and make sure that this is the right decision going forward. So just wanted to make sure you understood, we are a nonprofit and that really the member is what, at the center of what we do. So you may be very familiar with this picture, if not this picture, something that looks quite familiar to this, but this, of course, is the data centers that are in that area of the Thornton Road Riverside Corridor. We serve a line data center, which is off of North River Road, and DC Blocks Data Center, we're gearing up to serve that. Those two, a line is eighty-five megawatts, DC Blocks a hundred and eight, but we have others that are pending that we're working with in order to serve this. So we're going to that board, those members, and saying, hey, this is where we see we can serve, this is where we see we can at this time, give us your approval and direction to move forward. And so we have to really answer two questions before we can really say we're going to serve a data center at this time. First and foremost, of course, is can we physically serve it? Do we have the generation assets, transmission, distribution? Do we have just the physical things we need to serve it? Is it in our service territory? All of those things first. And we're also looking at making sure it's not a negative impact to the members that we have today. The second question that we're asking ourselves is contractually. I mean, these things are very large, they bring on a lot of risk, so contractually can we structure it so that our members that exist today never bear the risk that is associated with the data centers coming into the community? And so when we can answer yes to those key questions that our members are not affected and we can serve them, again, they're at the center of what we do, then that's when we look forward to how do we pursue serving a data center. So early engagement, we have found that that is really key. We work with developers looking for sites, very, very early on, we engage with them, we tell them, hey, these are the things that you would need, this is the timeline. Of course, the timeline continues to get longer and longer. But also, we are looking at what type of data center they are looking to, or what type of data center that they're looking to have. Is it crypto? Is it computing? Is it AI? Of course, there are some that we would say, no, we can't serve you at this particular time, but for others, we're really looking to see the details of what we're serving because that also tells the longevity of the type of service or longevity of how long they'll truly stick around most likely. And then we're looking for a tenant, if it is a co-facilitation type data center, we're looking to see who is your tenant. We want to get that granular because that also weighs in, but also are they a co-facilitation or a hyperscaler? Those are the key things that we're looking for. And again, it goes back to those questions to say, okay, getting that data helps us understand if we can truly answer the question of that it's not an impact to our members. So what truly is the impact to the grid when these data centers come and when we're saying yes? Well, we, there are three parts of our grid that we have to evaluate as they come into the community. First, you see is generation. That little box with the, the electric sign on it is the substation. If you think about it, it is stepping the voltage up and down between these three, three bubbles. So we have generation, we have the substation, we have transmission, those are the very, very large transmission structures. If you see in that blue bubble, those are what some of those structures look like. And then we have a substation that steps it down to distribution level and that's where we're serving our homes, our businesses typically. And so grid reliability, that's making sure that the lights stay on, resiliency, that's making sure if we have a major event, how fast can we restore? Those key things are our top priority. It's a top priority. When we say making life better for members, that's one of those key tenets. Keeping rates low and affordable, also making sure the grid is reliable. We want the power to not go out, but if it goes out, how do we get it back on as soon as possible, to put it simply. And so we want to make sure that anything we add on to our system, we're able to do that same thing, have a very reliable and resilient grid. And so from a generation standpoint first, when a data center is coming into a particular area, coming into Douglas County, they're asking questions, hey Greystone, can you serve us? Those type questions are very early on are being had. There, we're first off wanting to know what type of load, how many megawatts and when are you wanting this particular load? Typically, it's over a certain amount of time, it could be over ten years. But what is your load forecast? How are, when do you expect loads to actually come onto the system? And so at that time, we're not going to use generation assets that are already planned for our native load, our current members. We will have to contract additional ones. We'll have to, many times, those contracts lead to building new generation facilities. With the projections of AI and data center growth for the long-term, generation facilities, the need for those to be built continues to grow. So, so when we look at generation, we're really looking to say what needs to be added in the future to be able to meet the new demands that this data center will bring. It certainly isn't taking away anything from what we already have. The next area that was on our grid was transmission. And transmission is a key component because once you generate the power, whether you're using a natural gas facility, nuclear facility, you've got to get it to, to your load source, right? And so our transmission lines are a key component of our grid. And so many times, as data centers come into the community, that's another big step on making sure that we can physically serve them is the current structures that we have today, if we add additional generated load, if we add additional load to these transmission lines, can they support that? Joey's team, the team at GTC, they work very hard to put together studies, this integrated transmission network with Georgia Power, they're working together, putting together studies to say, let's study our transmission structures, whether it's the size of the structure, the size of the wire, the clearance, clearance is needed, let's work to make sure that it can withstand any additional load that's put on it or will they need to be increased, the size change and increase, additional transmission lines added. So that's a study that takes place and things are adjusted, added, increased in size if needed, if additional load is to be added. That study takes place to again assure that the members that currently exist are not affected at all by additional growth of load within the particular area. And then lastly, a part of the grid is that distribution, again, that's serving our houses, our businesses in the community. And so typically, that was the service, about ninety-plus percent of our membership base is residential. But the growth in data centers, the load continues to grow. If you look at the picture here, this is just an example of, it's not necessarily a house always being served on the distribution end. It also can now be a data center of many, many megawatts of load. And so those transmission lines showed in that picture, that those lines are feeding into a substation, those are key things that are needed to serve the data centers. And we also make sure that the data center are paying for those investment costs upfront. We have milestones that we put in place to ensure that, hey, this is what you'll, this is the investment needed, this is the costs that are associated with that investment and this is when you'll need to pay those costs. Once those costs are paid, then we get to work. So we also use and make sure that contractually, we are not making investments that someone else will have to pay for. At the end, we're making sure those that are needing the investments are making the investments, monetarily making the investments. So I would say some lessons that we've learned, some key takeaway is that, you know, risk mitigation is top of mind. Anytime there's risk, when it comes to large infrastructure projects, rates, all of those things, if risks are involved, we're trying to mitigate those by any means necessary. Upfront investment, I mentioned that, upfront investment for infrastructure commitments. Again, if we are saying if they need a substation, what many of them do, we're building a new substation specifically for that data center, they are paying those costs upfront. And then we make sure to avoid socializing, excuse me, any of the costs to our existing members. And then we also ask for huge amounts of like a performance insurance, parent guarantees, credit, you know, letter of credits, all of those things, but we put a strategy together to make sure that we mitigate any long-term stranded risk. Guardrails that we have in place, we make sure that we don't commit, overcommit, we have firm deadlines and we know how to say no. We've learned over the years how to say no, when to say no, or maybe when to say not yet. And then we also engage our external teams very early on in the process, we work collaboratively, we make sure that we are very transparent with them and them being the data center that are coming into the community. And then we're leveraging our experience, we are learning something new every day, but it never gets away from our core value, which is making sure that the members that we currently serve are not impacted, the risk that is involved in this are also minimized to the utmost, as well as just making sure that we also are able to serve those new data centers that are coming into our community. And with that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Okay. We have any questions for Nadia Fawcett? Any questions or comments? Commissioner Raxton, I see you're adjusting your mic. You have the floor.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for that presentation. I guess my first question is, has that presentation also been made to our Planning and Zoning Board? Because I think that would be an excellent opportunity for the full board to hear this.
I don't believe they have. I would be more than happy to make this presentation and we can get even more granular in detail than this, but be more than happy to. I don't believe so. We've had, I think, Madam Chair, you actually introduced us and said, hey, we want you working more collaboratively with our planning and zoning team. So we've done some of that, but we can go deeper and we can certainly present to them as well.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be an excellent opportunity to do that and also as we get questions from the residents about data centers, having something that we can also show, I don't know if there's already a presentation that we can also utilize and to share with our residents when they ask us questions, I think that would be great as well.
We can certainly put something together that can be more, you know, forward-facing, that even, you know, shows it even at a higher level, but I think education and making sure people understand the, everything, the strategy that goes into it to make sure that, you know, we can meet the demands of our growing community, but also protect the important piece, which is our members. We certainly want to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll do two things, make sure we have a forward-facing presentation that you can share, as well as make sure we follow up and present to the zoning, planning and zoning board, be happy to do that.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Any other questions, board? Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning. All right. Board, thank you so much for engaging my presentations. I believe in lifelong learning, and I know all of us do, and this is, it gives us an opportunity because we all make big decisions. And in order to make decisions, we need to have information coming in from not only internally but externally as well. We know that those utility providers, both water and power, helps guide our decisions when we are bringing in data centers in Douglas County. All right. With that being said, we will move now to the agenda adoption. Commissioners, do we, we need a motion to amend the agenda by adding an emergency item. That item is approval to enter into agreement with the Secure Record Solution LLC in the amount of $274,700, which will be reimbursed by insurance to restore and digitize water damaged records and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Sir, move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion, board? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. We have a four unanimous vote, and the motion carries with no opposition. All right, so any other items that need to be approved on the agenda? It seems like we approved it, so I'm gonna move on. Board of Commissioners, be mindful this morning, we have three minutes to make remarks and two minutes for rebuttal. And I, again, thank you all for engaging my presentations this morning. Approval of the agenda of the minutes, Board of Commissioners, next on the agenda, please review those minutes for tomorrow and be prepared to approve or deny accordingly. Next, we will begin our agenda items, and I will yield the floor to Madam Clerk. You have the floor.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, we will have tomorrow to vote on the acceptance of the monthly financial budget report for the month of July 2025. We will have three proclamations tomorrow. Number six is proclaiming the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in Douglas County. Number seven is proclaiming the September 22nd, 2025, as American Business Women's Day in Douglas County. And number eight is proclaiming the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Douglas County. Those will all be presented tomorrow. Under Grants, number nine, we have approval of an application for the Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $79,442 to be used to fund a portion of the Emergency Management Director's salary each year. The federal portion is $39,721, with a local match of $39,721 to be funded through Emergency Management Salary Budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. James Queen.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. This is a grant that we receive every year to pay a portion of the director's salary. We just had the approval for accepting the check for last year's, and this is approval to go ahead and move forward with the application for the 2025 budgets.
Any questions, board? No questions?
I do.
Vice Chair, you have the floor.
So what happens if the application, if it does not, if it does not get approved?
The full salary would come out of the general fund rather than a portion being funded through the grant.
Okay, all right. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Director Queen.
Thank you.
Okay. We will go ahead and move to the item we added, which is approval to enter into an agreement with Secure Record Solution LLC in the amount of $274,700, which will be reimbursed by insurance to restore and digitize water damaged records and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Karen MacDuff.
Good morning, everyone.
Hello. Good morning.
We are requesting to have an agreement signed to have water damage records sent off to be restored and digitized as a result of the burst water pipe in the Blake Amel Building. It significantly damaged around 400 boxes of records for many different departments, and those departments said that they do not have digital versions, or they do not have complete digital versions, which we are required by the Open Records Act and the Georgia Records Act to maintain. So we do need to get them shipped off and have them restored and then sent back to us, and that is what we are asking.
Any questions, board? I just have one question around the records when they were wet. I believe that you, we went through a freeze-dry process. Can you explain that to the board?
Yes, ma'am. So we had a company come out, they assessed the records. The records that were still wet were put on a refrigerated unit, and they are actually frozen, but that does not, that does not dry them. That only slows down the process. So they're still actively being damaged, and we need to have them shipped off. When we ship them off, they will be freeze-dried, and that will significantly stop the damage and dry them completely.
Yeah, okay. I thought that was interesting, you know, how we freeze things, how you freeze yourself so you can stay young forever and all things like that. Thank you. I just wanted the board to be aware of what we've done so far.
Yes, ma'am.
With freezing. And, okay. Well, thank you so much. There are no other questions, board? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You have the floor.
Okay. We will move to number 10, Authorization for the Chairman to Execute Unemployment Contract with Brandon Bailey as an Assistant Public Defender for State Court to fill a vacant position already approved in the budget pending final legal review. Monica Miles.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is a request to have a contract approved for Brandon Bailey. He's gonna be an attorney in our office, filling a position that's vacant due to resignation of another employee, no impact on the budget.
Okay. Any questions, board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Number 11, Approval of an Agreement with Kraft Power to Provide and Install a Transfer Switch for the Emergency Generator at the Douglas County Courthouse in the amount of $32,500 to be funded by the general fund, fund balance, amend the budget, waive the requirements for this item to go before the Finance Committee due to the emergency nature of this item, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Stephanie Morgan.
Good morning. This request is to replace a component on the emergency generator that is, you can't find parts for it anymore, and it is a very important part. It's transferring, if we ever experience a loss of power, onto the emergency generator, which, you know, operates all of our life safety equipment, detention equipment, so...
Any questions? Raxton, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
On page one of the, or the proposed, or from the proposed vendor, mentioned that they can offer a bypass option, which was not included in the above figures. And I was just curious, what was that figure, and is that even viable?
That, I would have to go back and look at it because I have not looked at that since I originally... Read that again to me, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Sure. It says, "We can offer a bypass option should a 16-hour outage not be feasible, using your onsite generator, and possibly minimize the downtime to two, four outages, and overall work time of 20 hours of labor." These charges are not included in the above figures.
Yes, this is the backup power that they'll need in order to take down the generator and the power at the courthouse in order to adjust for those. Those figures are not to exceed the 32.5. That is something that we will have to get with Kraft Power and look and see what we need to do in order to make sure that we can, you know, get in there and do it in a timely manner.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, you have the floor. Back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Number 12, Approval of an Independent Contractor Agreement with Lauren Crosby to provide medication management duties in the role as a medication case manager for approximately 32 hours per week at $30 per hour to be funded by the opioid abatement grant and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Karen Alexander.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, this is a position that we received through our opioid abatement grant, asking for you all to approve the contractor, and it is still pending final review. Oh, actually, I got an email this morning stating it was approved.
Okay. Any questions, board? Commissioner Kenny Jones, you have the floor.
Which court or department is this medication management being provided to?
It is for all three superior courts. So it is the Drug Court, the Veterans Court, and the Hope Court.
Perfect, thank you. Madam Chair, yield back.
Thank you so much. Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
What is the length of the contract gonna be for?
It ends December 2026.
2026?
Yes.
And is this grant gonna be approved? I mean, what's gonna happen with this position if the grant is not approved again?
Well, it ends once the grant expires. However, we always plan to export in other future grants.
Okay, because I know that our board is concerned about any grants once they expire, those positions are no longer available.
Correct.
If they're funded for that, okay.
No, they have been advised that once the grant ends, the position has expired, but we will seek other funding, and hopefully we get approved.
Okay. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I have one question for you.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander. This person helped me understand it, just a little bit, the medication management role of the case manager. Are they a pharmacist or physician?
No, it is just a liaison that will help with the participants between professionals such as doctors, psychiatrists, things of that nature.
Also, there'll be a liaison between?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
No problem.
Are they a doctor, a physician? Okay. Understood.
No, we couldn't afford it on that budget.
Oh, you can't afford it, right? Okay. So any other questions, board?
No.
Madam Clerk, you read the next one.
Okay. Number 13 is Approval of a Contract Renewal with Joseph Bridgers as a Housing Transportation Case Manager for the Superior Court Accountability Courts for approximately 32 hours per week at $30 per hour to be funded by the opioid abatement grant and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Karen?
Yes, Mr. Bridgers has been with us for several years now. This is just another funding source to pay him.
Okay. Any questions, board? All right. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Number 14 is Approval of Two Grant-Funded Surveillance Officer Agreements with Jeffrey Lentz and Jimmy Prince for the Felony Accountability Courts, each to be funded by the opioid abatement grant and the CJCC grant, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Karen?
Yes, as you all know, our program participants are monitored at night through surveillance through the Douglas County Sheriff's Department and the PD, the Douglas County PD. So this is just two new officers that we're adding.
Okay. Any questions, board? All right. All right. Thank you. You all have a good day.
You too.
Okay. Move to number 15, Approval to Renew an Annual Agreement with Priority Dispatch Corporation Q+ Quality Performance Review in the amount of $24,700 to be funded by the E911 budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Katrina Harley.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Administration. This item is, all of our dispatchers and operators are emergency medical dispatchers. This is an accompaniment to Priority Dispatch's program for emergency medical dispatch for quality assurance of those 911 calls that require EMS response.
Any questions, board? No questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, you have the next.
Number 16, Approval of a Janitorial Contract with Parks Janitorial Service from October 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, in the amount of $3,600 for cleaning the E911 department to be funded through E911 budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Katrina, you have the floor.
This contract is just for the remainder of the year. We do plan on acquiring another contract at the beginning of the year so that it will remain for the duration of the year. So this one just kind of ends out the year, and then we'll begin another contract in January.
Okay. Any questions, board? Okay, no questions?
Okay. Number 17 is Approval to Accept a Change Order Number One with Motorola Solutions for a Credit in the Amount of $36,700 in connection with the Backup E911 Building Monopole and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Katrina?
This is just simply a credit from Motorola. Initially, the monopole at the new Backup E911 Center was scheduled to be built at 160 feet, and so it will only need to be built at 120 feet. And this is also the credit for that.
Okay. Any questions, board?
Mr. Wayne told us to celebrate people when they save us money, so hooray!
Clap, 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 we like credits.
I just had one question regarding the credit. We love the word credit. Will that be going back into the 2016 SPOLOST, or is this part of the SPOLOST since Motorola was associated with SPOLOST?
I'm gonna ask.
County Ministry.
This was actually E911's fund balance that this was paid from.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. All right. I was, you were on a roll. I was gonna say, what's next? But congratulations on your savings.
Thank you.
Okay.
Number 18 is Approval of Contract Amendment with Batston Cook for the Salmon Library Renovation Project for Final Design and Updated Construction Requirements in the amount of $2,32,996 to be funded by the 2022 SPOLOST funds and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Consuela Gilchrist.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and County Administration. Yes, I stand before you this morning requesting funding utilizing SPOLOST funds for the renovation of the Salmon Library. That, this additional ask includes asbestos abatement, as well as emergency responder radio coverage, and full fire protection system sprinklers.
Okay. Questions? Any questions, board? Commissioner Kenny Jones, you have the floor.
It's not a question. I just want to use this as an opportunity to remind our citizens, while the Salmon Library is down, you can still access all of the tool services and resources that you would normally get from the library for free on the Hoopla app, and you can send your books for pickups to Dog River or to the Lithia Springs Library so that you're not experiencing an outage.
Right, absolutely. And then we also have a temporary location directly across from the post office in downtown on Camperston Street. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Just to make sure, because, you know, we did just go through this with all the citizens in regards to the amount of money that's spent. Just to reiterate, this is not coming from general fund, which is gonna be coming from property taxes. This is coming from SPOLOST funds, correct?
Absolutely. SPOLOST, yes, sir.
All right. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. And then also, what grabbed my attention was asbestos abatement. That's very difficult to control. Our citizens realize that the mitigation process is critical because certainly it's airborne, and it certainly is a risk to all of our health. And I run a big asbestos program for the Department of the Navy, and that is, you know, it has a latency period of 20 years for you to develop mesothelioma, and we do not want that to happen to our citizens here in the county. So it's my understanding in speaking with you, Dr. Gilchrist, that asbestos really cannot be identified until the project starts, because that's when the sampling and they start trying to test us. Like surgery, you get in there, you think it's one thing, it's another. So thank you for bringing asbestos to my attention. That is critical as we protect the safety of our citizens here in the county.
Yes, ma'am.
All right? Thank you.
Okay. Number 19 is Approval of an Indemnification Agreement with Tanner Medical Center Incorporated in regard to a mobile mammography screening event that will take place during our annual Health and Wellness Festival on September 19, 2025, at Deer Lake Park at no cost to the county, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Consuela?
Yes. Senior Services, we will host our fifth annual Health and Wellness Festival on Friday, September the 19th, at Deer Lake Park. This is a resource fair for older adults and their caregivers. As part of that, we have invited Tanner Mobile Mammography out as a participant, and they, this is a request to have the indemnification signed, and which means that they will assume full responsibility for anything that occurs on the property regarding their vehicle.
Yes. Okay. Any questions, Board? Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Just so our citizens know, when you say our seniors, from what age are you looking at from that?
For older adults?
Yes.
Fifty-five and older.
Fifty-five and older.
But everyone is welcome.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield back.
You're going to make sure you put some guardrails around that. All right. Thank you.
That's it. All right. Thank you.
Number twenty, certificate of preliminary plat approval for Ansley Trails, Austin Cronin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners and County Administration.
Good morning.
So I've prepared a presentation really quickly. Okay. So this is a request for a certificate of preliminary plat approval for Ansley Trails. This project was approved January seventh, twenty twenty-five as an amendment to the Trail's overall planned unit development. It's proposing sixty-two townhomes and forty-five single-family detached dwelling units, one hundred and seven lots total on twelve point eight-nine acres. With the Trail's PUD, they amended their minimum development standards as well to accommodate, and that was approved as well. They have an architectural pattern book and a minimum residential floor area is also approved as a part of the Trail's PUD amendment. And they intend to utilize private roadways off of the newly constructed Foxfield Drive, which is off of Highway ninety-two. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Austin, Board? All right.
Thank you.
One thing, Madam Chair.
Okay. We have one question for you.
Well, not necessarily one question, but maybe just have this one item, possibly not on the consent agenda, just under new business.
Right. Okay. That's fine.
Yep.
That's for the globe. Did you get that, Lisa? We're not on the consent. Thank you.
I yield back, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Number twenty-one, approval to enter into an agreement with Just Appraised for deeds platform solution in amount of forty-five thousand dollars to be funded from Board of Assessors budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Steve Balfour.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Administration. This is a request of thirty-five thousand annual contract and ten thousand implementation. We process at Douglas County between nine and ten thousand deeds per year and we're currently doing it manually. So we, this will bring us into the twenty-first century, make things a little bit more efficient and assist our one deed processing person. So if there are any questions, I do have the account exec, Mr. Christopher Cornellison, to answer any question and he does have a small presentation if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Would love to see the presentation. Is it two minutes or one minute?
I think I can fly through.
Okay. So the board, so we all understand what we're.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, members of the Board. So I'm Chris, I'm with Just Appraised. Just Appraised, what we do is we've, for eight years, we've come in and helped with, as you mentioned, outdated systems that are inefficient, error-prone, manual labor. And we, and we help bring the county more efficiency. We help eliminate compliance issues and make it a lot more citizen-friendly where your people are not doing manual processes, but now could do, spend more time facing the general public, which is good for everybody, as I've heard from a lot of the different demonstrations. But Just Appraised has been around for eight years. We, again, we come in. We have a one-time fee of the ten thousand dollar implementation fee. We're a SaaS provider, so there's no hardware. It's software as a service, no hardware to buy. We house all the data. It's secure. It's compliant. We partner right now with over three hundred counties, United States-wide, twenty-five states, eleven counties right now in Georgia. Your neighbors Cobb, Fannin, Hall, Cherokee are using our solution right now. They've recognized many benefits as far as ROI, but each one's different. What I always like to present is we can't put a price tag on the ROI of citizen satisfaction. So that's really what we try to profess. We are one of the only, we're the only vendor that can provide the full-service solution that will integrate with your current CAMAS system now to be able to export and digest or import the data into your CAMAS system to make it seamless, where we take the warranty from here all the way to the end at its final stage to make your system, again, much more efficient, cost-efficient, error-free, and staying in compliance.
Okay.
And that's my presentation. Any questions about the presentation? I wanted to make it four slides and real quick for you. Some of the counties that we work with, like I said, I mentioned Liberty, Cobb, Van and Gwinnett, Clayton County.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Kenny Jones, you have the floor. She has a question for you.
I just have one question. Having the deeds digitized and used in your service, will that assist the assessor's office or the probate court in making sure that our seniors are protected from deed fraud? I know that there's been lots of news stories lately where a house is no longer encumbered by mortgage and so scammers are going and filing quitclaim deeds and taking elderly people's homes. So will this service assist us in stopping some of that?
Yes, and, yes. Actually, your answer to your question is two. It will help the property appraiser process these deeds and property transfers, including all the supporting documents, the PT sixty-one documents that go with that, quicker, faster, more efficient, and stay in compliance, which will keep the fraud down. As a matter of fact, I can say, we also have a fraud detection solution. It's different and separate from this, where we can monitor that as well. But that's different from what we've shown so far. Sorry, I. But yes, the answer is yes, because the data will be much more accurate.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Kenny Jones. Mr. Raxton, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So can you tell us about the warranty and what type of support will be provided once this is implemented? If we, you know, if it is.
You mean our service?
Yes, service.
Well, we actually could come on-site if necessary to support you folks, but we have twenty-four-seven customer support. The warranty that comes in our contract is the deeds that we can read with our AI is at a ninety-eight percent accuracy level, too. I don't know if I'm answering your question correctly as far as service goes, but twenty-four-seven customer support for, just pick up the phone and call and we've even been here to set up implementation and walk Steve's team through the process of processing the deeds from start to finish.
Okay. And will you serve as that account manager or our first point of contact?
I will serve as the account manager, but I won't be involved in the implementation. I will be doing the handoff.
Okay.
So we have a full implementation team and a full customer support team.
Okay, great.
I think that was probably your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we can reach a body.
Right.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Vice Chair, Alcaraz, you have the floor.
Just because my ears picked up when you said that you do have that fraud protection software.
Mm-hmm.
Have you got one, Mr. Balfour? Just in case we lost any of that, what that price would be?
I haven't got, we haven't got that to him yet. I just stepped in as the account manager. I actually live in Florida and I'll be taking over the southeast United States. So I kind of came into this a little bit late, but he's already got the pricing on the deeds processing solution. And we do have a fraud monitor solution as well. And you probably, he's probably using one now called True Roll.
Okay.
So you do have, I would imagine to guess that right now the county has a fraud detection system.
Okay. And it just still, we're in twenty twenty-five and we're still doing things manually.
It, no, we can take what takes weeks and turn it into days or even.
Yeah. Efficiency. Efficiency.
Citizen satisfaction.
Yes, yes. Okay. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Kenny Jones, you have the floor.
In line with Commissioner Alcaraz's questions, not that this won't be on the consent agenda, but can you get to us an email confirmation whether or not we do actually have fraud detection? If we don't, we may need to be looking at some of those solutions.
I will. However, I need to say that for our processing, we are not one hundred percent looking for fraud detection. We're looking for a good deed, a good sale to continue with. So from the tax assessor's standpoint, we are, so it, another department may need it. So I'll forward the information. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Board? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. All right.
Number twenty-two, approval of a professional services contract with CDM Smith in the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars pursuant to RFQ twenty-three dash nineteen for independent cost estimate services for project number two-on-two-zero-five Riverside Parkway Trail to be funded from DOT's budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Sol Monrana.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners and County Administration. Excuse me. In our last meeting, we accepted a federal grant to build a multi-use trail connecting Newman Elementary School with their adjoining residential parcels. Per USDOT requirements, we're required to develop independent cost estimates before such services are retained. We're actively procuring for the design contract as we speak. Before we award that contract, we're requesting to utilize CDM Smith to develop that independent estimate and upon award, we'll use that estimate to negotiate prices. With that, CDM Smith serves as our on-call consultant. Therefore, we're recommending this contract for your approval. Thank you.
Any questions, Board? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next.
Number twenty-three, approval to accept the quote obtained by solicitation twenty-five dash twenty-one and allow vendor to begin repair work for the fire and EMS headquarters building totaling sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and eleven cents and to accept the insurance check in the amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-two cents, allowing for a record shelving expense to be subtracted from the insurance check in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents, leaving the remaining insurance proceeds of forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents with an additional amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents to be funded from the fire department's budget and nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and nine cents to be funded from fund balance. amend the budgets accordingly. Waive the requirements for this item to go before the Finance Committee due to the emergency nature of this item and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Justin McDermott.
You can say nothing if not thorough. Good morning, Board of Commissioners and Administrators. This is for the repair for the actual building, the fire headquarters and the records. You heard earlier about the records with the SRS solutions. This is just to actually repair the building. I wanted everybody to know where the money was coming from. And of course, the disparity is because of our deductible between our insurance and what we actually get paid out. And if anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Any questions for our manager? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number twenty-four, approval to increase EMS fees for service by thirty percent to align with increased cost for service and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Administration. Yes, we're looking for approval to increase our EMS fees by thirty percent to align with the increased costs that are going on here. If there's any questions, I have Deputy Chief Farmer to help explain a little bit more about why we need to do this.
Any questions, Board? Okay. Deputy Farmer, you have the floor.
Just a little historical perspective on this. In twenty twenty-two, when I took the EMS chief position, we did a kind of an M-DEATH review of what our charges were and found we were right at eighty percent under reasonable and customary. And we've been stepping up thirty percent every year to get us close to where we need to be. We did have a consulting group that, a group of us fire departments work with, public consulting group, you're probably familiar with them. And they looked at our numbers. Our transport fees cost us twelve, our one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and our average current fee for service is nine forty-eight. So with this thirty percent adjustment, it's going to get us to one thousand two hundred and thirty-three, right where we need to be, which is what the actual cost per transport is. So.
Any other questions, Board?
Yeah. This is the counter.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you. And that was going to be my question, are we going to be able to meet where we need to be? And it looks like based on the consulting and where we are and the recommendation, we will be able to meet and break even there, so.
For now. We've got some stuff coming to the pipelines. Whole blood has become a hot topic in EMS. We need to go to that to take care of the community for trauma-related instances. TXA, a couple of other things we really want to bring on next year that have shown to save lives. So for now, yes, but everybody's, you know, the cost of EMS is just going up, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We are still below, actually. We're, even with this move, we're seventeen percent below what's reasonable and customary for our surrounding counties. So we're still seventeen below, but we at least are meeting what it is cost for service.
Okay. And you mentioned that you're going to bring forth another proposal for the other additional requirements that you mentioned in the twenty-twenty-six budget cycle?
Yes, sir.
I see.
We're not quite ready to go there yet, but soon.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you. Madam Chair, you have the floor back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Board? Commissioner Kenny Jones, you have the floor.
To offer the blood service that you were just talking about, is that simply an increase in the cost of fees? Or is that a separate contract that you all will be bringing before us? And do you have an estimate of what that cost will be?
We don't yet. We're hoping maybe we can get some benefactors to roll this project out. We did include it in our budget, so it is included in there. I'll have the numbers with me, but I want to say twenty, thirty thousand to start and then it's sustainable from there, just for your normal fees of service.
And what would that look like in terms of increase for fees for service?
Well, I don't know that you would, so there's three different billing codes. I don't want to get too, there's three different codes and you may see, it would take more of our calls and push them into that higher limit of what we would charge.
Okay. Madam Chair, you go back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Kenny Jones. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
You already answered that. I was going to ask you, so what we look at in regards to where we stand against other metro counties of our size. So to know that we're still below really means a lot to me because, you know, our seniors, you know, they have to transport and the amount coming out of their pocket for this, you know, they're on that fixed income. So even though some of them do have insurance, but still, some of them still have the copays and so forth. So I'm glad to hear that we're still below. But, you know, as we talked about in the Public Safety Committee meeting, once you open a pack of anything, it's done, whether you use it or not, you know, if it's used. So those costs just keep going up and the amount of calls, people would not believe the amount of EMS calls we get in one day. It is a lot, especially when you get to, you know, some of our older population, perhaps we're, you know, right there around a hundred fifty thousand people. Our EMS and our ambulances, sometimes if you hear it on the radio, they stay on the road.
Run nonstop. Absolutely.
Stay on the road. So it takes a lot and believe it or not, that's very expensive to run that service.
Yes, it is.
But I yield back, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much. And Chief, me and you had light conversations last week about this new tool that Fayette County is using on the blood transfusion. Would that be wrapped up in this cause? Deputy Chief Farmer as well?
That's the same program we're looking at?
That's the one you're looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Any other questions, Board? Sounds like none.
Okay. Number twenty-five, approval to enter into a sponsorship agreement with Faithful Guardian Training Center to sponsor paramedic tuition for five students at a cost of fifty-two hundred dollars per student to be funded by the fire department budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
So speaking of the increase in our EMS calls, we're also in the business of sending our employees to Faithful Guardian for paramedic school, and so we're asking for the approval to send five students to EMS, excuse me, to Faithful Guardian for paramedic training.
Okay. Any questions forward? Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
So sending these five students to this training, is there anything going to be put in there for like a contract with them that they must work for us for so many years? And if they do not work for us for so many years, if they leave and go to another county, that county reimburses us back for that training?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's a two-year work contract that they'll sign? Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions forward? All right. Next.
Okay. Number twenty-six. Approval to enter into an agreement with Brinley Mountain Fire and Apparatus LLC for the sale of the 2022 Pierce tanker truck currently owned by Douglas County Fire Department for the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, with proceeds from this sale being placed into the fire department's budget, amend the budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Yes, so we have a tanker truck that we've had for a couple of years that, for all intents purposes, has been sitting at a fire station. We have two in our inventory, so we felt that as far as a need, it would be best for us to get rid of one and utilize the one that we have because that one we have does respond. The one that we're looking at getting rid of only has fourteen, excuse me, fourteen hundred, ninety-one miles on it. So it hasn't gone anywhere, basically. And so we're looking at wanting to sell this to Brinley Mountain for that reason.
Okay. Any questions? Vice Chair, you have the floor.
So I know we purchased the two tanker trucks, and when they came in, they weren't fully equipped.
That's correct.
Is the one that we're selling, does it have everything it needs to, you know, equip to be operable? Or are both of them fully equipped right now?
Both are... One is fully equipped. The one that we're trying to get rid of doesn't have all the equipment that it needs. So to your answer, to answer to your question is, they're not all fully equipped. One is, but the other one isn't.
Okay. Just making sure the one we keep is the one that's fully equipped.
Most definitely.
All right. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions forward? All right.
Okay. Number twenty-seven. Approval to enter into a purchase agreement with Brinley Mountain Fire and Apparatus LLC for a 2023 Pierce aerial ladder truck in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be funded from the fire department budget, amend the budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
So the proceeds that we get from the tanker truck that we're selling to Brinley Mountain, we're also going to use those proceeds to purchase a ladder truck. And keeping in mind, Brinley Mountain is a part of a co-op, so we're good there. I've discussed everything with finance and procurement. And so we're just looking for the approval to purchase the ladder truck with the proceeds. There is an administration fee that we have to provide in addition, but that will come out of our budget.
Okay. Any questions forward? Just... Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
I'm just curious, which station would the ladder truck go to?
Depending on where we're sitting at, it might even be used for a reserve because currently, right now, we only have three ladder trucks, and when one goes down, we don't have anything behind that.
Okay. All right. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Kenner Jones, you have the floor.
I was going to commend you for getting money back, but then you turned around and spent it.
Spent it.
So no celebration for you.
We are an expensive organization, ma'am. Thank you.
Yield back, Madam Chair.
He's turning his money, right? I love it. Chief, since we're along those lines, you know, we, me and you've had some discussions about a place for us to, and I wanted the board to be aware, to store the equipment. And I know our public safety chairman, who's our vice chair, that's something that we just can't keep kicking the can down the road. We need somewhere to store that equipment because what happens when we have all that beautiful equipment out and it's weather damaged, and then we have to buy more. So what can you share with the board what your concerns are, particularly as our public chair, our safety chair as well? I know he's aware, but can we just share with the remainder of the board?
So I've passed this information on to the county administrator, and with his permission, he's allowed me to go and look around and see what different facilities or buildings that we can locate to either lease or purchase ourselves to store our fire trucks. And currently, right now, the pickings are pretty slim, but I'm still diligently looking for these types of facilities that will be able to house not just our vehicles, but also our equipment because we have a lot of equipment that is exposed to the weather. So we're just checking everything out during the best we can.
Okay. But you'll keep us posted, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Please. All right. What's next?
Okay. Number twenty-eight is approval to purchase thirty-eight dual-facing dash cameras and thirteen patient compartment cameras for the ambulances, along with associated license fees and installation cost from Sam Sarah Incorporated under their Sourcewell contract in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents to be funded by the fire department budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
All right. Finally. So we're looking at wanting to purchase cameras for our vehicles. Dual-facing cameras, not just for the fire trucks, but also for the ambulances. We're also looking for the patient compartment cameras for the ambulances also, and that helps with liability, helps us with documentation, things of that nature. And so we're asking for that approval.
Okay. Any questions forward? Okay. No questions for you. All right.
Number twenty-nine. Approval of an MOU designating the Douglas County Chamber of Commerce as the official destination marketing organization for the purpose of receiving hotel motel tax revenues in compliance with the Department of Community Affairs and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Attorney Wiggins.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, it is still morning. As you know, we are in need of a new contract for the destination marketing organization. And based on conversations with administration and this board, we have selected the Chamber of Commerce to be that DMO for the county. So before you is a draft, you should have it in your packets, I hope, you have a draft contract that just goes until the end of the year. Obviously, the need to renew those contracts happen either at the end of December or the first thing in January for determination if we will continue the relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. And so this contract has been reviewed, and it is here for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions forward? Commissioner Kenner Jones?
I presume that the compliance with the Department of Community Affairs includes like the notices to the state or anything that we're required to do to change the DMO?
Yes. That will, if approved, obviously, we will provide that information to them.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Madam Chair, yield back.
Okay. Any other questions? Forward. All right. Okay.
Okay. Our last item, number thirty, is authorization to create a Douglas County Audit Committee deferred from August nineteen, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Roxton.
All right. Thank you. So again, we discussed the creation of an audit advisory committee at our last meeting based on input from the Commissioners and Madam Chair. The following changes were incorporated. One was the number of advisory committee members, one where we would have each district commissioner to nominate and appoint a member from the district to serve on that advisory audit committee. Secondly, we will also have two members of the Board of Commissioners to also be a part of the audit advisory committee, the chair, as well as one of the district commissioners. Other than that, this advisory audit committee, we were seeing no financial compensation. And we did modify the requirements from requiring ten years of experience in government financial analysis, evaluation, auditing to five to seven. And we also have included information or comparable experience as it relates to possession of professional proficiency, auditing, financial analysts, certification as a CPA, CIA, or comparable experience. So with that, Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you if there's any other questions.
Okay. Any questions forward or comments? I have a question for you, Commissioner Roxton. Have you, I know you're the vice chair of finance. Have you had any conversations with the chair of the finance committee?
So the draft resolution was sent to all members of the Board of Commissioners. I've not had any subsequent conversation.
I believe you have two comments for myself and Commissioner Kenner Jones.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Just want to make sure that, because this document that I'm reading still says a ten years of experience, so.
This is the second one. It says NWR edits. Yes. It's in the, it's the second link there.
I see.
And you'll see some of the changes there in red.
Got it. Okay. I yield back, Madam Chair.
All right. We're just trying to pull up line. I want to see it. I feel like an English teacher. Okay. All right.
Chairman, can I confirm, will that be on the consent agenda tomorrow?
I was hoping, and Commissioner, surely it's up to you, I know this is a resolution that you're bringing forth for us. I would love all five of us to vote on it, and are we, do you know whether Commissioner Mitchell will be here tomorrow?
I don't believe so, but he may be calling in.
Madam County Attorney, can he, he has an opportunity to vote once from online, correct?
He can, so long as this is not second or more virtual appearance.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that I covered all those bases. Okay?
So will that be on new business?
Yes, it'll be just new business. I'd rather for it to be a separate instead of the consent.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for anything, any other discussion before I tap the shoulders of our county attorney?
Do you have a Commissioner comment?
Yes. Okay. You have the floor, Commissioner Kenner Jones?
So I know I have a tendency to ramble for the public, so I did try my best to write this down to stay on task in my three minutes. But since the millage rate hearings, there have just been a few things that have been weighing very heavily on me, and so I just wanted to take an opportunity to address those things. The first thing that I do want to do is make sure that I apologize to all of our Douglas County employees for not correcting inaccurate statements which question some of your integrity or work ethic. Those statements should have been addressed immediately, and for that, I do apologize. And I'm sure that none of my other commissioners intended for that to go by without being recognized or acknowledged. There are over a thousand of you that work for Douglas County who show up every day and you provide a hundred and ten percent and do it with limited and outdated resources and that we are forever grateful and appreciative of. With that being said, I did have the opportunity to meet with one of our constituents following that hearing, and he said something to me that struck a nerve. He asked for transparency, which we often get requests for those, but he was very specific in his statement saying that often we let misinformation or statements be added to the record that are never checked, and as a citizen, those things that go unsaid lead people to believe that misinformation or misstated facts, misstated information go down in the record as facts. And at this point, silence is compliance, and that made me think about all the times since I have been elected that I have heard someone, whether on this dais or comments directly from the podium, that are patently false. For that, I too apologize and commit going forward to provide immediate clarification when possible and to seek appropriate feedback and guidance from administration, legal, finance, or relevant subject matter experts to ensure that the public gets factual and accurate information immediately and that our record is preserved because that record will live on long after most of us are gone, and it needs to accurately reflect the truth of each matter before us. In an effort towards transparency, I do want to address some comments or questions that were raised, some by my colleagues, others by individuals in the audience about what has happened over the last two to two and a half years. To that, I say, we have been working to stabilize a system that for decades has not worked for many among us. There was innuendo levied that the budget was constrained due to the 2024 vote to roll back taxes. To be clear, the rollback accounted for approximately 1.4 million dollars. It was a temporary reduction in revenue that would not cripple the county's budget, and more importantly, the rollback was necessary, was a necessary decision to relieve stress on constituents who were drowning in property taxes. That decision was made with deliberate care and consideration for balancing the county's needs for property tax revenue versus residents' need to maintain their livelihoods. And if some of us on this dais want to dicker over whether or not the loss of just over a million dollars to the county's operating budget was more important than saving residents from having their properties sold as part of a tax sale on the courthouse steps, I'm sorry, but that is an argument that I'm absolutely willing to stand on every single day. We are here to fight for the best interest of those who we, who have elected us to serve, and that vote was a unanimous rollback. We keep tiptoeing around how we have reached this point. To state it plainly, there has been over a decade of deals implemented that were extremely beneficial to corporations and businesses, but did not push the county forward in a way that was supportive to residents while enhancing our overall infrastructure. Abatement deals were not reviewed thoroughly to address the needs of the county while also working to reach amenable terms to drive business development. Because of that, some of the largest corporations in the world have had the opportunity to come here and maintain and attain maximum corporate benefits while residents saw minimal relief towards their tax burdens. This is in stark contrast to deals approved in the last sixteen months. For example, AWS received a desirable deal for themselves while being required to provide direct benefit to Douglas County on day one of their signing. That deal was beneficial to both entities due to the hard work and deliberate considerations of myself and our development authority, ensuring that the needs of both entities was upheld. We are in this position because some want to focus on pet projects that promote vanity and ego as opposed to stepping back and analyzing the needs of the entire community. We have a fiduciary duty and an ethical obligation to carry out the work of the county for the benefit of the people. The work should speak for itself, but I find here that the echo chambers of leadership are built upon taking credit for the good despite contribution or lack thereof and abdicating responsibility for any failures that befall this community. A true leader steps up and takes the punches and the applause with their counterparts and employees. It is a consistent blame game, and it needs to stop so that true work can be done. Accuracy and transparency need to lead the day, and we have a duty to quell the spreading of misinformation. For instance, the community has been led to believe that the CSB is not funded to the tune of several million dollars, if not funded to the tune of several million dollars from the general fund, that the doors will be shuttered and we will be consumed by neighboring counties. I admit, I too failed, I too fall in this category of individuals who believed and shared this narrative. However, despite repeated assurances directly from the DBHDD that Douglas County CSB is not experiencing a funding shortage, data submitted to the state by the CSB themselves demonstrating that they have finished in the black financially for two years and likely will this year, some continue to lead with this narrative, and it's harmful. Due to this misinformation, we now have an outcry of community members and nonprofit owners who have been led to believe that these services are going away and that is not supported by any legitimate data. This misinformation has also now pitted two critical healthcare systems against each other. That is not acceptable. We are now having conversations regarding funding that is already earmarked by resolution to the public health department, which again, is a county-owned asset. The county owns the health department building, and there was a misleading statement to the public that the building is full of state employees. What we do know is that out of all three hundred and fifty Cobb Douglas Health Department employees, only approximately five are truly state employees. The remainder are split between Cobb County and Douglas County employees respectively. To not hold true to the unanimously passed resolution granting the public health department renovations would leave Douglas County employees who have dedicated their lives to the health and support of this community in a way that would be villainous. We need to make a concerted effort to ensure that we are not habitually making decisions based on fear and anecdote and make decisions based on facts. That is not to absolve myself, as I am guilty too of posting or commenting from a new jerk reaction based on information that was provided. But that moment of eating crow has reminded me to always trust but verify everything. Another point of contention that was obvious from the millage rate hearings was in regards to Connect Douglas buses. We failed our residents in letting the moment pass without correcting the perception that the buses are costing the county four million dollars a year. That is simply not true.[1779.99] To be clear, the Connect Douglas funding request, as an example, for two thousand and twenty-six is three point three million dollars. However, one point eight million of that is from grants. The remaining one point five million is from the general fund, and that is before any additional revenues are generated from fare collections. And although that is a nominal collection, it is still something. And before DOC seeks any additional supplements or grants that may come available, that's only an expenditure of one point nine, one point zero nine percent of the county's total operating budget. Is worth, it is, I, I do think that it is a worthwhile service to provide, considering at its lowest count, there was approximately twenty thousand riders, and at its highest count, seventy-six thousand riders. To be plain, the buses are not empty. They operated a minimal impact to the budget, and they are a direct benefit to our overall infrastructure and quality of, of life for residents who need this critical service. Additionally, residents need to know that public transportation has a significant positive impact on economic development, which is greatly needed here to relieve some of the tax burden on residents, and I would be more than happy to discuss those benefits with anyone who would like a meeting. I don't make these statements based on a personal desire, but based on personal knowledge and years' worth of study dedication to under, to understanding these systems. I have an undergraduate degree specifically in public health, community health education, and took concentrations in disease processes, epidemiology, community health organizations, and data analysis. That was followed by a public administration master's degree focusing specifically on policy creation and governmental leadership and policy analysis. And then finished that education with a law degree where I received the highest grade in the law school in healthcare law, and additionally focused on poverty and the law. I uniquely understand the connections between public health, access to transit, public safety, and mental health services. My, my decisions are driven singularly by data and, and analysis of trends, not based on who was the requister or a personal agenda or desires. Finally, as to the aides, I would like to reiterate that most of the district commissioners have part-time aides. We are also part-time employees. We all have additional full-time jobs. Some of us have multiple full-time jobs. And the majority of us want to be extremely responsive to your needs and your, and your request. Without aides, we cannot do the work that we do, and we cannot provide you with an appropriate level of service. I promise to the public that there is not a single aide employed by this county who is getting rich based off of this job. None of us are getting rich doing the work that we do for you. I will leave you with this. Attitudes and performance are a direct reflection of leadership, and true leaders stand steadfast in the winds of change. They operate with character, decency, integrity, and most importantly, honesty. They own their mistakes and do not deflect mistakes and failures off on others, and conversely, they share in the winds. We should aspire to place politics aside, as we are public servants. And in public service, there is no place for political whims. It should always be people before self. It is doing your best to benefit the most among us. Thank you to our employees, all of our first respondents, first responders, that is nine-one-one, sheriff, animal control, fire, EMS, EMA, and code enforcement. And thank you to our directors and to all who show up every day doing the most with the least. It does not go unnoticed, and I do appreciate you. Madam Chair, I yield back.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Kenny Jones. That was very well stated and very well written. And I appreciate you imparting your thoughts and ideas and just sharing with us this morning. That's, that was needed, so thank you. Thanking the staff for all the things that they do, because, you know, this, it could be heavy sometimes. It's heavy lifting, and they know wholeheartedly that this entire board appreciate everything that they do. So as we work through our process, as I always say, this is a work in process, progress. As we keep going, each day we learn something new, and each day we try to do it better. My, actually, my column this year, not this year, but this month that rolled out was in the words of London B. Johnson regarding, you know, we can't do anything about yesterday, but we have tomorrow, we can, if we don't do anything about our future, and tomorrow, we will lose. So we don't, we want to win or lose. So our goal is to win. So thank you so much, Commissioner. That was very well stated. All right, any other words from the board before I tap the shoulders of our County Attorney? County Attorney, tell us, we don't, I'm just teasing you, do we, do we have a motion, do we need to go into executive session?
Before I address that, let me just say there is one correction on the agenda under number twelve. I believe the presenter, Ms. Alexander, responded to Vice Chair Alcaraz's question about when does the contract end? And she said December. It actually is in August of next year. The agenda item is fine, it's just, I just wanted to correct that. And yes, we do need an executive session, and if you get that motion with all four reasons.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation, personnel, real estate, and cybersecurity? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion board? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising the right hand. We have a four unanimous vote to go into executive session, and the motion carries with no opposition. And citizens of Douglas County, we will take a slight pause for the calls to go into executive session, and we will return momentarily. Thank you for your patience.